Good evening and welcome to the June twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-four Town Council Meeting. If you'd kindly rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Got a little more than the usual announcements here. The town offices will be closed on Thursday, July fourth, in observance of Independence Day. The Town of Merrimack invites you to join us as we celebrate the Fourth of July. Wednesday, July third, is our annual Patriot Concert in the Park with the Merrimack Concert Association, which will be held from six-thirty to eight o'clock at Abbey Griffin Park. On Thursday, July fourth, the High School Road Runners Boosters Club will be holding the Sparkler Five-K Road Race at eight AM. At, does it begin at Merrimack High School? At Merrimack High School. From eight AM until eleven, the Merrimack Road Club will be holding their annual Pancake Breakfast at the high school. And tickets may be purchased at the door and the costs are as follows. Adults are ten dollars, seniors are eight dollars, ages, kids age thirteen to seventeen are eight dollars, ages four to twelve or five and underage three are free. The annual Fourth of July Parade will kick off from the Commons Shopping Center at one PM and travel down Daniel Webster Highway and then turn onto Bebiscake Lake Road. It will then turn left on O'Gara Drive and finish at the high school. In the evening, come and join Merrimack Parks and Recreation and DJ Darren Roy for music and food trucks from seven until nine fifteen in front of the Merrimack High School. And then pick up a perfect spot to get ready for the fireworks, which are scheduled to go off at nine fifteen. If you have any questions, you can call Parks and Rec Department at six zero three eight eight two one zero four six, or you can go online at merrimackparksinrec.org. And then the last thing I have is our upcoming council meetings, Thursday, July twenty-fifth, Thursday, August fifteenth, both at seven PM, and Thursday, September tenth, at seven PM as well, are all regular meetings. And Paul, if you have anything.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Did you say September tenth?
That's what he said.
Yes, that's what's here in front of me.
No, it's gotta be September twelfth. September tenth is a Tuesday. It's September twelfth, sorry.
I think he's fired.
There you go.
No, very good, sorry about that.
So it is September twelfth is the...
Okay, this is a regular meeting at seven PM. Paul here at the Matthew Thornton Room.
Thank you.
Thank you, Paul.
Expect some lane closures on the FEA return pipe between Exit Eight in Nashua and Exit Ten in Merrimack this week, next week, within the hours of six-thirty PM and six AM due to road work. This will take place Monday through Thursday and is part of the twenty-two million dollar widening and reconstruction project. Motorists should remain alert while traveling through the work zone and obey the posted signs. Message boards, uniformed officers, traffic signal control devices, and smart work zone devices will be used to notify the traveling public. And I understand six-thirty PM, having traveled that road is not, there's still a lot of traffic. So just be patient when going through that area. And either that or you can go around Exit Eight and come through Tinker Road if you live in Merrimack. Sir, S U R Construction West Inc. is contracting with WSP Engineers in St. Albans for the connection of the existing water main project that was bid in December of two thousand twenty-three. This project will be beginning sometime in mid-July. It includes new water service for approximately thirteen residents in the Merrimack, and thirteen residents in Merrimack and nine residents in Bedford. Construction staging will be on the Pearson Road near the pump station, where the sand gra, they'll use sand and gravel and fill in, and they'll use sand, gravel, and fill, will be stored onsite while performing water services and installations. This is that going down, continuing between the Merrimack line and the Bedford power lines. What they're gonna do is, we have talked to them, we have given them specific construction details they have to follow. They have to come out first, mark the area where they're gonna be using for their storage area, remove all the loom in that area, put down a gravel base, take pictures prior to removing the loom, take, put down a gravel base, then they can store the material on top. When they're done the project, they remove the gravel base and put back the loom. So we're hoping that this project won't take more than a couple of months to complete, but it all depends on how much ledge they hit between the area of Pearson Road Pump Station and the Bedford Town Line.
Thank you, Paul.
That's all that I have.
All right, comments from the press and public, seeing no one here. Recognitions, resignations, and retirements, we have recognitions this evening. Tonight, we're gonna be, we have certificates for the following people. David Trippett, who's sat on the Conservation Commission for three years. Julie Poole was Parks and Recreation for nine years. Kevin Peters was on the planning board for, for just a year. Maureen Tracy, he filled that slot, I believe. Somebody sat down, he filled the one-year slot, yeah. Let me see, Maureen Tracy was with the planning board for two years. Karen Kontos was with the Town Center Committee for three years. And Brian Downe was with the zoning board for a year, he as well had filled the slot. And so, do we need a vote on this, Paul?
No, it's just a pedicure.
So, very good, so we...
Do you wanna read this one?
Should I, yeah, because it's, the, the certificates are presented to these individuals in recognition of their service as members of those various committees. And it states, "In recognition of your dedication and commitment to the public service during your appointment as a member of those different committees, your service and devotion to those," it's a little awkward to read them this way, isn't it? "to those, those certain committees that has had a valuable effect upon the community. We wish to extend our sincere appreciation for your outstanding performances of duty." And it's, we always are looking for new members, which we have a couple that will be coming up, and we appreciate all that they've done. All right, appointments this evening. We have John Frichette for, of the Town Center, the Heritage Commission, sorry about that. And it's per Town of Merrimack Charter Section Six, Section Six. At least annually, there should be a review with the Heritage Commission. The agenda item is to highlight the commission's significant actions, current projects, anticipated actions, and to raise any concerns the council should know about or could act upon. Hi, John.
Thank you for having me. Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
For those that don't know me, my name is John Frichette. I co-chair the Heritage Commission with Chip Pollard. I've been with the Heritage Commission, boy, I don't know why, about three years now. So unfortunately, our, the Heritage Commission hasn't got a lot accomplished this past year. We've had a lot of personnel issues, our projects have stagnated. Sadly, we lost Anita Krieger and Lon Woods. Our Town Council representation has changed, Barbara Healy stepped down. Now we have Finley Rothaus, we're very pleased to have you there. I know Chip and I have family obligations that have been tying up a lot of our time, so we haven't had any time to really attend to our projects. And I'm glad to report that we picked up Matthew Brown. He's a very promising young man, very intelligent man, so we're expecting some good things from him. So some of the projects that we have going on, I've been working with Ellen Brinker from the Descendants of the Declaration of Independence. Several years ago, they went around and put bronze plaques on all the signers of the Declaration's graves. We have it on Matthew Thornton's monument down here in town. Now they're going around trying to put bronze markers on all the wives' graves. So she reached out to me, they're trying to get a bronze plaque for Hannah Jack's, Hannah Thornton's grave down here in Thornton Cemetery. And I've been where, I emailed with Paul and they've given the go-ahead. So they're in the process of actually creating the bronze plaque. And they, they're gonna get a granite slab to mount it on, so that it's, you know, down in the ground that... They're in the process of doing that, she said she would reach back out to me when they have it made and they can reveal a, a revealing date. They're trying to get it all accomplished before the two-hundred-and-fiftieth, Nation's two-hundred-and-fiftieth in two thousand twenty-six. So that's been ongoing. We have a project trying to recognize and post signs at twelve, and now it looks like it may even be thirteen of the one-room, two-room schoolhouses that were throughout the town, the five firehouses, the railroad stations, we're trying to post those historically. We're in the, we're at the stage right now, we're trying to get some pricing on signs, and we've really stagnated on that. I spoke here last year about a new project that we're working on, trying to, trying to recognize a new Pascanaway tree. The old Pascanaway tree that was down at Thornton's Landing dropped in a hurricane, I believe, in nineteen thirty-eight. And there's a really large, I believe it's an oak tree, a red oak tree, right out by, past the Conaway's Islands, right out by the Merrimack River and out by the Reed's Ferry Depot. So I went down, visited, I would like to develop that area as maybe a town park, 'cause it's really underutilized land, and, and have the tree designated. Unfortunately, the tree falls short of being a champion tree in the state, but it's still a very remarkable tree and was around, I believe, probably about three hundred years, even into Pascanaway's time. So it definitely, that tree definitely deserves some recognition. I haven't had a chance to get down there at all this year. I think that's all I have for those ongoing projects. I do have a topic that I wanted to bring to the council's attention and possibly weigh in on this one. So a little history lesson before we start, I know you all, you're all history buffs and everything, so, but just in case you... So Merrimack is a town that's not like most. We actually have two incorporation dates. The town was incorporated in seventeen forty-six, it's on all our town seals. And that included land that was from the Sauhegan River south. And then by seventeen fifty, we decided we needed some more elbow room, so we petitioned the King for some more land. And we were granted a, we were granted a charter from there against at six, which we now know as Reed's Ferry. And that was incorporated in seventeen fifty, so we actually have two incorporations. And before I joined the Heritage Commission, I happened to notice, we have two. So at the town borders, we have large wooden signs that say, "Welcome to Merrimack Incorporated seventeen forty-six." And then right in the center of town, in fact, right outside the town hall and then one down at Watson Park, we have large granite signs that say, you know, "One town, four villages, Merrimack seventeen fifty." All right, okay. The second incorporation, right. So no doubt, it like needles you, you're like, if, those that know anything about history go, okay, second incorporation, I get it. But those that don't know history go, look at these, the town government, they got the wrong date on the sign. And, and once you, once you see that, it starts needling at you. And so I brought that up at one of our Heritage Commission meetings, and it was like pulling a Band-Aid off of a sore wound. Apparently, this was a very contentious debate for about fourteen months. Yeah, okay, some of you are nodding your heads, you know, but yeah, so that's the exact reaction I got when I brought it up. Like, oh, no, don't mention it, don't. And I kinda took a vote and I said, oh, yeah, we kinda agree with you, we think the sign should say seventeen forty-six instead of seventeen fifty. And I met some opposition from people that were in the original debate. But I think the, the majority was, yeah, we should look at having those signs changed to seventeen forty-six. I reached out to some granite companies to find out what that would entail. They used to have a procedure that they would mix granite dust in with, with epoxy and fill it in and then, and then ground out a new number and everything. But over time, the epoxy would yellow and the, the original number would show through. They're like, we don't do that anymore. To get it done properly, they would have to grind out a whole square and put an inset with the proper date in that. I haven't had the chance to reach back out and get prices on that, but I wanted to bring that to attention and get feedback on that. Is that something that we should even pursue or, you know, leave it as it is? There are, there are pluses and minuses with the seventeen fifty on there, for those that don't know, it's an interesting talking point. Why did your sign say seventeen fifty? Well, funny you should ask, let's talk about the second incorporation. But then all those that don't really know about history, if they even notice the signs to begin with, they'll say, eh, look, it's, they got the wrong date on there. So, I mean, there's good and bad, I can see why the debate took so long.
So a little more history about those granite signs. Anita was the one who, who was pushing the seventeen fifty for the dual incorporation. Those granite signs were supposed to go at where those wooden signs are right now, at both ends of the town. DOT said, no, 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 they gotta be collapsible, because if somebody hits them, the sign has to be collapsible so they can drive through it, not hit a granite, and then have the granite fall on them. So they were purchased, we had them, so we said, okay, we'll put one at Watson Park. And Anita said, can I put one at Town Hall? So we said, yeah, you could put the second one at Town Hall. Me not knowing that there was two incorporation dates, I said the same thing. Why seventeen fifty? And the justification, I'll just say what Anita told me the justification was, was that that's when we became the Town of Merrimack. One community, four villages. And in seventeen fifty, we became the one big community of Merrimack. So that's why she, and I'm sure the debate that you had was about the seventeen fifty date versus the seventeen forty-six date. All the town's paperwork, as you know, and even if you go to the Secretary of State's office and pull up the Town of Merrimack, it says seventeen forty-six. And that is what we use, July second seventeen forty-six. So Merrimack's birthday is coming up in a couple days. So, but anybody wants to bring birthday cake into the town staff, I'm sure they'll be more than happy to accept. But, you know, that, so that is what we use, is, is July second seventeen forty-six. Oh, April second. April second, sorry, April second, April second, July second, hey, I'm looking for cake. April second seventeen forty-six, and that's the date that we do use. And actually, that is the date that's on file with the state of New Hampshire. So just a little more history of, of why the seventeen fifty signs and why those granite signs are in those two locations, because they were already bought, and instead of throwing away, we said, okay, we'll put them over by Watson Park. And really, one by Watson Park covered up that power, brown, brown, brown border with that had the power to get into the park. So we figured that would be a good spot to put it, cover that, what I thought was a nice ore in that park. And then Anita asked if she could put the other sign at Town Hall, and we said, sure. So...
Yeah, those signs were Anita's project, and from what I gather, the others that were involved in the debate just said, we were tired of arguing with her, so we let her. And just another point, too, those granite signs are in Reed's Ferry, which was incorporated in seventeen fifty. So at least it's in the proper village.
Right.
And that's all I had from the Heritage Commission, do you guys have any questions for us?
Nothing, nope. I lean towards the Anita Krieger seventeen fifty, but I, I get the point. It provokes conversation for somebody who might notice.
We could always petition to have the town seal changed.
Thank you, John, thank you, John, for coming this evening. Thanks for everything, we really appreciate it.
We still got plenty of time on that, so, yeah, and if it comes up in, in talks and future talks and stuff, let us know. Thank you very much, guys.
The one thing I do wanna say while John's here, is that they are looking for an active member of the planning board.
Oh, yes.
And Finley, you're the Town Council Rep, an active member for the planning board. And I believe they do have some other openings that, if you are interested in history, come on down and, and, and join this group, they do a lot of work. A lot of the white signs that you see on some of the buildings around town, they did the research on them to say when they were built and all that. So they're, they are definitely into history and the heritage of Merrimack. And there was a lot of knowledge when Anita passed that, that, or unbelievable, she could talk for hours about the Town of Merrimack and, and things. And you just learn a bunch of things about where, where the first Indian graves were, which are on Anaisa Bush's property, and where's that glacier rock that's over on Penichuck's Water Works property and things of that sort in town. But, yeah, so you'll be getting a member from the, from the planning board, we're gonna, we asked them to put that on the next agenda. And that if anybody else is interested in, in history in the Town of Merrimack, please send a letter of interest to the town manager's office, and I'm sure they'll be more than happy to appoint you to the committee.
Yes, thanks for mentioning all of that, Paul. In fact, that's Barbara Healy, with discussions with Barbara, that's exactly why she stepped back. Not only was she a member of the Town Council, but she was a member on the planning board. So she actually decided she was gonna step back so we could have Town Council representation and a member from the planning board. And the whole point to that is that we have somebody on the planning board. Before any new construction goes in, we can at least preserve history before it goes in. We're not looking to stop, you know, or, or even hinder, you know, further production. I mean, that's what keeps a town going, but we'd at least like to preserve the history before it disappears. And, and you're right with Anita, she is a fountain of, of knowledge there. We have five filing cabinets that we're still trying to rifle. Fortunately for Anita, she wrote everything down. It's the idea of filing, you know, getting through all the notes and, and filing it, so, thanks again, guys.
And the, well, another point I would like to make is, is this is not a Town Council decision to put Heritage, Heritage Commission to have a planning board and a Town Council member. This is state RSA that says you need a planning board member and a representative of the board, whether it's a select board or a Town Council. So it's, it's not an ordinance in the town, this is an RSA from the state that we're trying to follow.
Great, thank you all.
Thank you, Dave. We have no public hearings on legislative updates. I have just a quick note from Representative Maureen Mooney. Greetings, please note that the filing period for incumbent House members to file legislation for the next year is September third through the thirteenth. And the filing period for all elected House members to file legislation for next year is November sixth through the twenty-second. So that's when the new members get elected that day. So thank you for all you do, Representative Maureen Mooney. Nancy, did you have anything? And there's nobody else here, so we'll move on, Town Manager's Report.
I'm good right now.
Because I did it all for you, I knew that.
Well, you did a very good job reading that, and, you know, I'm gonna tell Becky to put my announcements on your, your announcements, go ahead.
All right, thanks, Paul, I appreciate that. There's no consent agenda. Under Old Business, council is to consider the request to authorize the town manager to sign an agreement with the City of Nashua and with the lead agency of Greater Nashua Regional Coordination Council to receive a one-time funding from fifty-three-ten federal funding of twenty thousand dollars with a requirement of a twenty percent match and administrative cost of five thousand dollars from the Town of Merrimack to be used to fund para-para transit, transportation for eligible Merrimack residents. And Paul, did you wanna speak?
Yeah, I'm gonna speak to that tonight, no, Pat, that's not common. Basically, if you remember about a month, two months ago, we had Nashua Transit in here. And we had the woman sitting off to the side, and she said, oh, I have extra funds that I can give to Merrimack on a one-time basis. Knowing that we went into a default mode on our budget, knowing that basically the services for our elderly and para-transit for the National Transit Authority, they were requesting seventy-two thousand, and in our budget, we could only afford about thirty-eight thousand, being in the default setting. So we had conversations with the, the National Region Coordinating Council, RCC, and they said, oh, we can give you twenty thousand dollars, but that means that it's a five thousand dollar match. And I know we were talking about seventeen thousand dollars, but do you think you could come up with the extra, you know, hundred dollars? A thousand dollars to, to match this? And I said, yep, we can come up with the match for five thousand dollars if you wanna give us the twenty. So with the twenty-five thousand dollars in our, our thirty-eight thousand that we had already set aside for National Transit will be about sixty-three thousand dollars, which is less than the seventy-two they wanted, but I believe the sixty-three will be sufficient. One of the routes, as you know, with the National Transit Authority, is they're doing away with the Hudson Route. And that was a lot of man-hours, because we get charged by the man-hour, not by the trip. So that man, that was a lot of man-hours we're using for those trips. So by reducing that, and what was last year a big draw was we had a gentleman going to rehab to Hudson almost weekly, twice a week. So by reducing that, I think the seventy, sixty-three thousand dollars is sufficient. The reason why we're in front of you tonight, Pat and myself, is that we do not have, I don't have authority to sign this contract because this is a new contract with the Town of Merrimack. And I just wanna say this, twenty thousand dollars is a one-time event. And talking to them, they said, this isn't gonna be reoccurring, we just had extra funds. This is a one-time event to get us through the default budget. Next year, in twenty-five, twenty-six, we're gonna have to come up with that money out of tax base. So, but this is a one-time event, so I just need authority to sign this fifty-three-ten federal funding, please. And I'll answer any questions.
And the, it said our twenty percent match and administrative costs, is that, does that twenty percent include the...
It includes administrative, administrative costs is a hundred and twenty-one dollars.
Oh, okay. All right.
Yeah.
Wasn't clear to me, but I appreciate that.
It's both, yeah.
Does anybody have any thoughts or comments?
Just quickly, Paul, this is coming through the National Regional Planning Commission, or...
Yeah, they are the ones who actually, the state gives the money to the National Planning Region Commission, National Region...
Regional Planning Commission.
Planning Commission. And they get a bill from National Transit, and then they pay, they send it to us, say, is this okay, we okay it? Then they pay the bill to the National Transit. And this is all because of this federal funding, and, and how it works is that the money comes to the state of New Hampshire. The state can't give it to the National Transit Authority, they have to give it to the regional planning commissions to oversee the money going to the transit authorities.
And they split it out amongst the different communities?
Yeah, in this region, right.
Cool, I, I just hadn't caught that, and I was noticing that Jay McCarron had to sign this contract and wanted to understand.
Yeah, Jay has to sign it, because really, the money's going through him. And he's doing all the, he's really doing all the, the finances and the administration of it, we're just, and National Transit, we're just saying, yep, we can do it, so they can use the federal money.
Okay, great.
It was, it was amazing of the timing, and I wanna give kudos to Pat Murphy, because she, she really was calling up people and saying, hey, we got this problem this year because we overspent. And she's like, I was calling people, seeing if they had any extra money, and then this, you know, came up, and they said, yep, we have extra seventeen, so would you like it for next year? I'm like, sure, we'll, you know, especially when we went into default setting. If we didn't go into a default budget, it would probably, we probably wouldn't have got this money. But they saw that we were in default money and they wanna keep the program alive.
Pat does a good job all the time.
Yes, she does.
Always looking at that. Is there anything further? See nothing?
So I moved to approve the service agreement with the City of Nashua and lead agency of Greater Nashua Regional Coordination Council.
Can you hear, can you hear it? I'll repeat it. Move to approve an agreement with the City of Nashua and the lead agency of Greater Nashua Regional Coordination Council to receive a one-time funding from fifty-three-ten federal funding of twenty thousand dollars with a requirement of twenty percent match and administrative cost of five thousand dollars from the Town of Merrimack to be used to fund para-transit transportation for eligible Merrimack residents and authorize the town manager to sign any necessary documentation.
Motion by, Andy, second by Nancy Murphy. Was it Nancy? Was it, yeah.
And sorry about the loud noise, Grace.
Any, any discussion on your motion? Any further discussion? See, now I'll call the question, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed or abstained, seven zero zero. And thank them for that, that's, it worked out very well. The next item under two of Old Business, the council is to redetermine committee assignments for the current year after the departure of Town Councilor Barbara Healy. And I chatted with Andy and Tom, and Mackenzie had spoken about, I'm sorry, Jennifer had spoken about the Conservation Commission being on that. And so Andy, what I'd like to do is, they could speak to it if they wanna do it or say no again, but Andy said he would take on the full role of the planning board. Tom is gonna go to the alternate, and Jennifer was gonna do the Conservation Commission. If that works, I know. She's not the first one to say that, actually, so...
That's great.
But is, is everybody good with that? So do, do we just make a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to revise the present...
Committee...
Committee assignments to change the Conservation Commission. Town Council Rep from Andy Hunter to Jennifer Jobin, from Planning Board Voting Member, which was blank, well, actually, it was Tom Keenig, to Andy Hunter.
Your, your mic on?
Your mic's not on.
Oh, man.
I have to repeat that, that'll teach me. I would like to make a motion to revise, actually, it's helpful, to revise the present committee assignment listing to the following. The Conservation Commission, that was previously Andy Hunter, to be Jennifer Jobin. The Planning Board Voting Member, that was previously Tom Keenig, to be Andy Hunter, and the alternate to be Tom Keenig. All the remaining will remain the same. Is that appropriate?
Yes, and, and I, and I think it's all fine the way it's worded, but you actually were still the alternate, you were just filling in because Barbara had left. So that's why I think it's a meaningless change, but...
Just to, just to validate it. Just to ver, just to validate it.
Yep, so.
Yeah, sorry, Dan is that, but.
Yeah.
Okay.
So if there's no discussion on this, before Andy changes his mind, I'm going to call the question. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed or abstained? 7-0-0. Thank you, Andy.
And thank you to all of you, taking the assignments.
I will make sure that the, uh, the boards get the changes, so that Jen will be put on the Conservation Commission agendas, and Andy will get the Planning Board agendas. In the mail, by the way.
Oh, yep. Yeah, the agendas do, yeah.
Is there going to be some training sessions, Tom? Are you going to do some training sessions today? You're not even going to help?
There with me, Mike? Okay. Next, on, uh, I'd prefer, under New Business now, the first item under New Business is Council consider appointing following individuals to the Town Committees pursuant to Charter Article 4, Section 8. We've had, Nancy did interviews, um, two nights ago.
Conservation Commission and the Zoning Board of Adjustment.
Yes, and, and they, so these members are, uh, most of them are reappointments. Um, Eric Starr, Conservation Commission Full Member. Tom Martenson, Conservation Commission Full Member. Steve Perkins has chosen to go to an alternate position with Conservation Commission. Chip Pollard, Heritage Commission Full Member. Michelle Cresswell, Parks and Rec Committee Full Member. Matthew Brown is the student representative to Parks and Recreation. Mark Williams, Planning Board Full Member. Ben Niles, Zoning Board of Adjustment Full Member. And Scott Sabans is a new appointment, uh, Full Member to the Zoning Board of Adjustment. And, uh, so.
Did you have a question?
Jennifer?
Oh, the way you're holding your hand, it looks like you were, sorry.
Happens. So, um, unless somebody would like to separate these out, we could take this as a motion in entirety.
I move the appointments as listed.
And I'll make a second.
Motion by Tom Koenig, second by Mackenzie. Is there any further discussion on your motion? See none, call the question. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed or abstained? 7-0-0. And thank all these people for stepping forward or continuing, uh, with the different committees.
And if they could please see the town clerk, since they're not here tonight, if they can see the town clerk, could get sworn in again for the Reed Turners?
Yep.
And for the new Scott Saban, if you can see. And if they want to come see Becky, Becky can take them down and get sworn in.
Oh, okay. All righty. Thank you, thank you. Item number two, under New Business, Council to consider the acceptance and expenditure of a donation in the amount of $1,000 from the Lions Club of Merrimack going to the Parks and Recreation Department to be used towards Camp Scholarship Fund pursuant to RSA 31:95B and Charter Article 8, Section 15.
May I say so moved?
Very good. Motion by Nancy Harrington.
Second.
Seconded by Tom Koenig.
With gratitude.
With gratitude, yes.
With gratitude.
Yep, absolutely. Um, and that's to be used for the various things within the fund, within the camp, yes. Uh, so, uh, no further discussion. I'll call the question. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed or abstained is 7-0-0. Item number three, under New Business, Council to consider the acceptance and expenditure of a donation in the amount of $640 from the Rotary Club of Merrimack to the Parks and Recreation Department to be used towards, uh, to Camp Scholarship Fund, uh, towards the Camp Scholarship Fund pursuant to RSA 31:95B and Charter Article 8, Section 15. And that's for two camp scholarships.
So move.
Motion by Tom Koenig, seconded by? I'll second.
Seconded by Mackenzie. Any discussion? See none, call the question. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed or abstained? 7-0-0.
Again, with our appreciation.
With our gratitude and appreciation.
I really want to thank both the Rotary and the Lions Club and everybody else who's donated Bear Christian and all that, the other ones who have donated camp scholarships. It really does make for a nice summer for, for some of these kids to be with their friends over the summer and not feel left out and enjoying the camp experience down at Waspin. So it is a great experience. And without these scholarships, some of these kids would not have the opportunity to go to summer camp. So greatly appreciate it.
Yeah, absolutely. All righty. Next on the agenda, Finance Director Paul is, go, Paul. No, I don't think I've ever said it out loud before. Calabria?
Calabria.
Calabria?
Yeah.
That's right. I did say it before, because I put the emphasis on the wrong syllable, but. He was, well, he's here to review key financial information for the quarter ending March 31st, 2024, pursuant to Charter Article 8.
Is this his virgin voyage? Has he been before us?
I thought he did.
Yeah, he's, I think that's.
Oh, he wants his own laptop. Calabria.
Calabria.
I would have pronounced it incorrectly, but that's.
I'm sure he's word of her wars.
Oh, yes, absolutely.
It took me forever to figure out Don Tuamala's name.
Yes, Tuamala, I know.
It was a tough one.
Or Yvette Cowger.
That's true.
Three hours.
So first up is the?
Paul, make sure the mic's on?
Yep, it's on. So first up is the electrical kilowatt comparison. Have you all had a chance to review the slides? Perfect. After kilowatt, we have natural gas consumption. Seems like it's a little, it's a little bit warmer winter, so consumption is down a little bit compared to previous years.
That's not dark correlation across either, is it?
No, just thermes, yeah.
So, so could you tell me, Paul, um, I'm only saying that because you go back those few years. The change in the highway garage spiked and then came back down, spiked for one, two, three, four years?
Yeah, that, those four years were because we had electric block heaters. And now the cars are inside.
Yeah.
And we're not using the electric block heater. These are the thermes. So, uh, the, uh, the building's more energy efficient now and things of that sort. If you look at the kilowatt uses for electricity, it's kind of the same thing. Once we got rid of the electric block heaters, the consumption went down a little bit. We had a spike for the first two years of the garage, and when it was up and running, but it, but it's there. One thing I would like to point out, and Paul would like to point out, is that on the kilowatt usage is wastewater is significantly lower. And that was because of the, uh, the bond, the upgrade. We were out of the building for most of the year this year. Um, so the, the kilowatt u- usage in a, remember, our main pump station, we were bypass pumping. So we weren't using electricity in our main pump station. We were, they were bypass pumping as part of the contract. So that will go up next year as an overall comparison for both, uh, for the electricity.
But look at the streetlights with the change.
Yeah, once we, once we went to the LEDs, it went way down. And if you look at the traffic lights, that's how long, we've, in 2013, 2014 is when we changed over the traffic lights to the, uh, the LEDs as well. So, see, see, it's been pretty constant every year at, at that, that rate. Um, and then the streetlights, yes, by changing to the LED streetlights, um, you could see it definitely coming down. And, and this is just comparison for usage. This isn't dollars. This is just usage.
That's my point.
Yeah, so, yeah. So it just, in all, all of these, as you look down, building grounds is down in usage. Fire department was down in usage of kilowatts, so.
Great, thank you.
Yeah, thank you. And, uh, you know, I just completed my third month here, so I still have a lot of reliance on Mr. McCallie's historical knowledge of all these numbers.
No worries.
Yes.
Three months and you're still here. Great.
Like, like I say, my staff keeps coming back every day, so that's a good sign. And then the thermes, as Paul touched on a little bit. Questions on the therm usage? Health insurance, we did see an increase. I wasn't here last budget season. What did we experience for an increase, Mr. McCallie, for the 23, 24 sharing?
13%.
14, yeah.
13, 14, 13.8. It's like 13.8 in this current budget that we're in. Next year, it's 17, over, almost 17% increase over last year. And the other thing too is, even though we've had open positions all year long, our mix is changing. Some of our younger employees are, are that were on their parents' plan, are now coming onto our plan. Um, so we're picking up the full cost of a single plan. And they're getting married. And they're having children.
Having children.
So our younger, our younger generations are, are having children.
They're going to family play.
Our older generation, our older generation, even though they're going down to two-person, there's a lot more ailments that is happening. So we pay, our, our health insurance cost is basically what we pay. Our insurance company pays out is what we get charged for our health insurance. So it's costing about $2.4 million in claims and health insurance through the three quarters.
Uh, next up, we have New Hampshire Retirement. As, as Paul mentioned, we have had some open positions. So that's what's driving down the police and the fire numbers over last year's numbers. Group one, the non-unions are, are almost flat. But also, New Hampshire Retirement for Fire and Police are right around the 30% range, whereas the Town and Police are 11.53. So even though there might be some open positions, it's not as drastic a decrease as it would be for the police and the fire.
And we're at 74% of our total budget, which is right in line with
Right on line.
three-quarters of the budget.
Yeah. And then we've got some overtime charts. Fire continues to be problematic, and that's driven a lot by their, uh, open positions along with the police, especially with the Police Department. That's what's driving up that number over last year's number. Hopefully, with the new union contracts, we'll see that those open positions mitigated over the course of the '25 fiscal year.
If we took over, or fire overtime and fire salary, where are we at percentage-wise with budget? Do, do we know as a combined total?
Yeah, we do have a slide about salaries.
Oh, okay.
Moving ahead. Regular wages paid, Paul?
Yeah, the last one.
Yep, fire is 315, and then?
Yeah, is it after that or before that? It's after that slide, I think.
After this one?
Right before the revenue. Keep going.
Yep.
One more. Uh, no, go back to, sorry, go back to.
Two.
Go back, one more, right there.
Yep.
So right now, there's an estimate savings of $315,000. They're over budget. So they do have some, through, through three-quarters, they had some savings in salary dollars to cover their, uh, to cover their overage. But as of June 1st, um, it was pretty tight. And actually, as of the pay period, because we just finished pay period 51, it's really tight to cover. Um, there's some other savings in the, um, in the department, in the salaries expense lines for like health insurance and, and other things, which normally we use for big projects, if we had a big project. Um, so we're using some of that money to, uh, help alleviate some of the dropping, uh, the overtime that's going on. Uh, we are working with the fire chief and his command staff to come up with a solution going forward. It's the staffing to 11, as long as the overtime, uh, relates. Right now, they have three gentlemen for this month, for the last three months, roughly. They had three mo, three members on workers' comp. So that's six shifts a week. We had two openings, so that could be up to another four, three to four shifts a week. So basically, that what they were covering over the last three months was about nine to 10 shifts a week in overtime. So depending on where those vacancies lie in, in the shifts. So that, uh, that eats up quickly on their salary savings with it. So we are looking at, you know, next, in the '25, '26 year, we're looking at some, uh, budget options for the overtime. Uh, next year, the chief is aware and will be looking at the options. Hopefully, we just hired one firefighter, and we have one in the book? Or no? Did they, did they make the decision on that, one of the other ones yet? All right, well, they have, they have two candidates that they're, they're, uh, waiting to bring forward. So hopefully, by mid-July, they'll be fully staffed again. And we're starting to get the people off of workers' comp. So we'll be reducing that number of, of overtime. So normally, in the years past, um, it's always been up to the Town Manager to cover the workers' comp cost for overtime. Um, and as in this year, it's the same. We'll be covering that workers' comp cost, which is running about $90,000 this year in total for, uh, workers' comp and overtime cost. So we'll be looking to cover that from, from our salary save, our, uh, health insurance savings. Does that answer your question?
I mean, it, it, it does, but can we go back to the chart that shows the overtime?
Yep.
I mean, if you look at these trends, right? The fire overtime budget has exploded, and I'm assuming that's probably 2020, the purple, where it?
Yes.
Originally?
2020, 2021.
Yep. But we've never recovered from that, and that doesn't make any sense to me.
That's when, uh, Council decided to staff to 11.
Right, but we had overtime conversations that haven't really worked out the way I thought that they were going to. Also, we need a bit more creativity, in my estimation, and finding if there's, if it's typical from 1:00 in the morning till 5:00 in the morning, nothing's really happening, except for the occasional chaos, occasional, then we should maybe be manning during those hours. And I don't know. I haven't seen anything that tells me one way or the other, whether it would work. But I really suspect that there's large chunks of time in the middle of the night when, when it's quiet. And having, needing all apparatus running, it, it might kick in, but, you know, people, I don't know if they'd still come in on, on a call like that or not. I imagine they do, but.
Fire calls, yes, ambulance calls.
So we have to, we have to look into that kind of thing, because this is, it is huge.
Is, is overtime time and a half or something like?
Yeah, time and a half.
So by not budgeting this into wages or, or having the people to work, we're, we're paying a premium to staff to 11. We're not just paying straight time to staff to 11. We're actually paying 11-plus, because we're, we're staffing it with overtime, right?
Correct, correct, correct.
See.
When you do overtime, do they do the whole 24-hour shift overtime?
Yes.
See, that's another one.
Well.
Well, that's what I'm saying. There's certain times of day, it's busy just naturally in the afternoon.
If it's an open shift 24 hours, if somebody's out for 10 hours, it's only 10 hours. If it's an open shift, like if it's a vacancy or somebody in workers' comp, it's the 24 hours. If some, if a gentleman's taken or one of the 80 firefighters has taken four hours off to go see their kids play, then it's only four hours on something like that.
Right.
So, yeah, but it is, it, it, they are staffing 11 24/7.
But they're doing it with overtime, so it's costing the town even more than it would cost if we were just staffing 11 at straight time.
Correct.
I mean, that wasn't, that wasn't my intent when, when I voted in favor of, of going to 11.
Well, we did address that issue even when it initiated too, that our concern was overtime and.
And when the budget ran out, that was it. And that didn't happen.
Yeah, and if you look at where we were last year, I think that's, most of us expected that to be the ceiling. And, and we blew through where we were last year by a long shot, and we're only in Q3.
Well, the only problem.
I guess these are normalized for Q3 of last year as well.
Correct. It's Q3 versus Q3.
Yep.
Um, the one thing I, I do have to say is that, uh, I lost my train of thought.
Well, they had openings now, which didn't then.
Well, they did too then. Um, the other, oh, that's what I want to say. Three years ago, we had the SAFRA grant. We got new, eight new employees. They really didn't have a lot of leave time. They have since accumulated leave time in the three years they've been here. And they're entitled to taking that time off.
Of course.
And they are taking that time off. And that also reflects on, on the overtime because of that SAFRA grant that we had, um, that we got three years ago, uh, February of '22, I believe, was the SAFRA grant. I think February '22 is when we started having this conversation.
But, I mean, you know, if, if I'm managing that budget, that just tells me I have more pressure on my overtime budget, right? If I know that I'm going to have additional people taking vacation, I know I'm going to have more pressure on my overtime budget. So therefore, I need to start managing it early. So therefore, I need to start managing it earlier. I need to, as Finley said, in the quiet hours, drop down to a ten-person shift versus eleven. But, I mean, we just can't, in my opinion, we can't continue this trend.
So I, I don't know if we can, if it has to be a general item or if.
I can bring it back, I can bring it back, I know the sheets you're talking about.
I'd like to say something more recent.
I don't, I don't think, um, I don't know if we have the the, the old sheets, the data, the old staff, if, if, because that's been two and a half chiefs ago. But we can, we can ask to see what's going on with run, they should be able to give us, like we had and, and do it in the twenty-four hour. Ambulance calls, fire calls in those hours. Uh, mutual aid.
Asked for and how much we gave?
We, uh, we, we're a given, we're a giver town now.
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 Where before.
We were, we were, we were a taker.
Additional, we were major takers.
Yeah, um, and a lot of the, um, the mutual aid, from what I saw, is out because of the ambulance. Our, their ambulance calls for Bedford or Nashua. We're going down with our ambulance to help them out. And Amer, Ameris has their own ambulance service.
Overtime.
We're not doing it on overtime, but if the shift is covered to eleven, it, it potentially could be a gentleman in the ambulance who's on overtime that day. It could be.
Because we're at, keeping eleven, we have an available staff to help.
Correct.
If we were below eleven, we might not be able to get there.
Yeah, yeah.
I think this is a bigger conversation that, um, we should have. But I also believe we need to look at, um, our ambulance rates at the same time. And, uh, bring this all into kind of that whole discussion with our ambulance rates, whether we want to raise them or not. And look at our ambulance calls and, and things of that sort. And actually look at call, when we're getting called out, uh, for motor vehicle accidents, for smoke alarms, like we did before. And I remember those sheets. And it took a while, it took, it took several months to come up and have that visual aid to show that, you know, between eight o'clock in the morning and twelve o'clock, we're, we were running ragged. And then, you know, between the hour, rush hours, we were running ragged again. For, for a lot of these calls and, and accidents and things of that sort, so. But I think, uh, we'll be able to bring, we can definitely hear what the council's saying. Uh, be able to bring this back hopefully July, if not July, in August to have, uh, to have a, uh, another conversation about the overtime with the fire chief here. So, um, you know, I can, uh, so he can, he can talk for himself, so I don't have to talk for, for the fire chief.
Can we also, I'd, I'd like to see overtime budget as a percentage of, of salary cost. And then I would also like to see expenditures as a percentage of overtime budget. Cause I, I mean, I get, it may not be fair to show it in dollars.
I think I understand what you want. You want to see.
I want to see overtime budget as a percentage of salary, so we can see how much of a percentage, and I'd like to compare that to police.
I could do it for everybody.
Okay.
DPW and every, if I'm gonna, if we're gonna do it, we can do it for everybody. I just want to make sure that
Yeah.
Paul and I have a clear understanding of, of what you look. So if I have a million dollars of, of salary dollars for my staff and I have three hundred thousand for overtime, you're looking at that thirty percent.
Thirty percent.
Thirty percent of that.
So we can see, okay, what are we budgeting as a percentage, like compared to other departments?
Right.
And I think fire and police are very comparable in, in that. And then as, if you got a three hundred thousand dollar budget, what percentage are we spent of that three hundred thousand dollar budget?
Correct, all right, I, I, I think we, I, you understand what he's looking for, Paul? I think I do. I wrote that down.
Okay, perfect. I, I.
Thank you.
I think I understand.
I get the gist.
Cause it, dollar for dollar, obviously, if they have a bigger crew, then it, it isn't comparable
Right.
To compare one department to another. But as a percentage, you should be able to compare.
Police and fire are pretty comparable with, uh, boots on the street. Fire has, um, four shifts, forty-four. I think police have forty-two. So they're pretty comparable for boots on the street. DPW has a whole, all DPW, including wastewater and, uh, and solid waste, they have about fifty total employees that are on the street. So, um, you know, we, we can, we can do that and, and compare.
I mean, if you're telling me police and fire are roughly the same size as far as personnel and you look at those graphs.
You also got police officers that are only working a eight-hour shift, so if somebody calls out, they're not filling for twenty-four, they're only filling overtime for eight. Which is a huge savings.
Which is what I think we're saying we should look at in fire. If it's, if it's the middle of the night and it's a quiet shift, why are we paying someone overtime to come to the fire department and?
Right, it's just, we gotta look at the charts and see what, you know. I'm not saying I'm an expert. I'm just saying, the arguments that I've heard through my twenty years here is that while it might be quiet in the middle of the night, that's when the most dangerous fires happen, is when people are sleeping. Now, but we have to look, we have, I'm just saying, we have to look at the shift and see for a twenty-four hour on Monday, twenty-four hour on Tuesday, for, for a couple of months. And we'll pick a couple of months and see, you know, that's the, the biggest advantage in working in the federal government and, and municipal governments is you have history going back to the age of time. So we can look at this stuff going back and compare month, July of twenty twenty, twenty-one, twenty-one to July of twenty twenty-three, twenty-four and figure out
Yeah.
Did, you know, was, is it cyclical, is it, what is it?
Yeah, we, we'll never get risked to a zero sum game.
Right.
Right? But we can make smart choices.
Yes, great, Nancy.
Thank you, in addition to, to what Paul was just suggesting, to really have a bigger picture, cause I know we've asked for this in the past and I know the chief did bring, uh, sort of a synopsis, but maybe if we could have a little more data, not just that, that comparison of a month, or you know, the July every year, but really what the utilization of resources are based on time of day, um, over a period of time. Cause the data, I believe they're collecting that data, they'll be able to tell us.
Which we've done before.
Yeah, but just to really to, to look at that, and I mean, we've, we're, we're manning for eleven and I just think that that would give us a little bit more of a comprehensive picture and I think that would be helpful.
We, we, we definitely, I remember, um, previous fire chiefs come in here and explain on a, you know, um, a delta call or echo call, what they're sending versus a alpha call. And, and these are all call symbols, alpha, alpha's the, the least, alpha's like a sprained ankle, a cut finger. Uh, echo is, is a, is a heart attack and the person's not breathing. So kind of the severity of the calls go down from there. Um, but we could see what resources and what type of calls, even during the day that they went out on, or for ambulance as well, what kind of calls they went out on.
Which helped us make the decision about the grant.
Right.
That's the kind of data that was presented to us
Right.
That we could visually look at and it showed the kind of medical calls we were getting, receiving at that point. And all of the, and because we didn't have the staff.
Correct.
Which justified us going for the grant.
And I believe we talked about ALS, Advanced Life Support, and then BLS calls. And that's really what we broke it out, we never broke it out to A, B, C, D, E, F. But we've, broke it out as Advanced Life Support and that's four or more and BLS of four or less, so to speak, is, is what at the time when we talked about that, that's what the staffing would be. But we, it was, I remember the charts because it showed eleven o'clock, one co- call. Eleven fifteen, the second call came in, eleven forty-five, the third call came in and we were stressed. We were, that was the red block and the other blocks might have been a green block where we only got one call. So I remember those charts, so we can, we can try to resurrect those.
Cause the, the, the graph that I recall that was very helpful was a circular graph that one of the chiefs did. And it, it was a twenty-four hour graph and, uh, and they, you, you could easily see when, in the middle of the night, they was down towards the center and then the busier times of day.
I'll have to go see, I don't remember that one, to be perfectly honest with you, but I'm sure it's out there. I don't remember the circular one, I remember the one that had the days of the month, every twenty-four hours. And it was big, on a big plotter paper and stuff like that, so. Yeah, we, um, probably more like August, so we have a couple of months to work on it, but I, I kind of understand where you want to go with this and, you know, bring it forward and, and, uh, and look at it some more with the overtime and the personal service cost.
I appreciate that.
Calls of service.
I think that'll be good. Thanks, Paul. Paul, sorry about that.
Oh, no worries, really great discussion. Um, I've seen that in my whole career from Hollis to Milford. You get the staff openings, you get some people on workers' comp and it just, it just wreaks havoc, wreaks havoc on the budget.
It's nice to know we're not unique.
No. Sadly, we're all in that same boat. Um, this one's a comparison, excuse me, for, uh, Police Communications Highway and just solid waste.
To get a better look at the line graph so that, you know, fire kind of skews it with their numbers versus these other departments. Police, police is up the last three years because of their staffing vacancies. You know, they, they're running what they need to run on the streets.
It would be good to get those.
Can I, can we go back to that?
Absolutely, Andy.
So if I'm looking at police, right, and three years ago, four years ago, they were right at two hundred thousand. They're, they're a little bit under three fifty right now. So that means they had an increase of about a hu- less than a hundred and fifty thousand. But didn't I see on our earlier chart, they have salary savings of four hundred and something thousand?
Yeah, they, they've been running about five openings all year. Not the same, not the same five people, but basically five openings for most of the, four or five.
When, when you come here and you say, okay, you know, we've got four hundred thousand dollars in savings in salary, but we spent an extra, you know, a hundred and fifty thousand on overtime, okay, I get it, like, I totally get that, right? But that's the part that I don't understand about fire is it's way skewed.
And I understand that, I understand where you're coming from on that because you're not alone. You're not alone, I'm sure the other seven, six counselors and even myself is on that.
All right, I'm glad we're all on the same page.
And this one's just, uh, again, general government and other departments. General government's really kind of a blip on the screen, you can see that they've worked really hard around this building anyway to mitigate overtime. And then here's the graph we went down to before this, the three hundred and fifteen in savings, Andy, that we were talking about a few, a few minutes ago. And police with their vacancies looking about four hundred thousand, again, it can be offset by the overtime. Any questions on this slide? So we're thirty-seven percent remaining on this slide and we're only twenty-five percent of the year, so we're, we're in good shape through the third quarter. And then the departmental summary. So those that have less than twenty-five percent left in their budget, um, solid waste disposal. Uh, welfare, which, uh, Mr. McCallie has mentioned, uh, several times, we knew that was gonna be over. Uh, that is another thing that's very typical of all our towns in the region, um, the need for welfare from the community in this economy.
And some, are those, some of those because of purchasing?
Solid waste, solid waste, we have, um, the remaining, as you'll see, we have a two hundred thousand dollar encumbrance and that's for our trash removal.
Yeah, so.
We, we've estimated just recently that our trash removal and disposal for our construction, for our refuge and for our recycling, we're gonna be about maybe sixty thousand dollars overspent of what we had in the budget. Um, we're asking for more detail, um, from the solid waste to see what our tipping numbers are, to see if it was price driven or if it was, uh, God bless you.
Bless you.
Um, tonnage driven, weight driven. So we're looking in, in that area to figure that out while we're over there. Self-supporting funds, those in their own, they bring in money. They're supposed to support themselves, just like the title says, so. But we try to keep them not to overspend those accounts either, if all possible. Those are like our outside detail for police, fire, that's our other self-supporting. And of course, you know, if you look at, um, the bond, the bond is the bond. We're, we're, we know we're, we're gonna be substantially complete within two weeks, so that number of five percent doesn't surprise me. We, it's gonna be zero in two weeks, so we know that that number was going down. So it kind of skews, skews this chart a little bit because of, uh, what's left in it and what we have to do, so. But if you look at the general fund, like Paul said, we have about thirty-four percent of our money still left, which is, which is good, uh, very healthy. Um, a lot of that is always driven because of the, the vacancies that we did have in salaries. And we're looking at, um, we've been looking at what, uh, what we can buy at the end of the year that will help us next year for, um, non-recurring costs such as a cruiser or sand and salt or chemicals or, you know, um, sawdust, stuff that's not really a recurring cost that we can do some buy aheads and, and be in that, that boat with, uh, to help us out next year because we are gonna be in a default budget and, um, to help us offset some of those, those costs.
Good. And then revenue comparison, a little bit of good news.
Gosh, they still, unbelievable.
Uh, auto registrations are up, um, pooled cash is up.
Isn't that unbelievable?
I've been, was there a question, Nancy?
Well, I think we're all looking at the auto registrations. Every year, we keep on saying, this is gonna end.
Right.
This is gonna end, but at the same time, I know it came up prior meeting with all the apartments that have been built.
Yes.
People who come in.
New, new people are coming in registering their cars, yeah.
There's more people registering their cars, so that makes sense.
Population's growing.
And the other thing you gotta remember is back in two thousand eleven and twelve, a Toyota Corolla cost you fifteen, twelve to fifteen thousand dollars. A brand-new Toyota Corolla in twenty-three, twenty-four, stripped-down model, nothing fancy, twenty-five thousand dollars. And if you get a hybrid, throw another five grand on it, thirty thousand dollars, or twenty-eight to thirty thousand dollars for a car, stripped-down model. So cars cost more money now, so that helps. The apartments help. I would have to say, I am not seeing the dealer templates out in the parking lot as much as I have seen in years past. So a lot of these
New reg.
New registrations, a lot of these are new people to town. Uh, a lot of them are used vehicles that they're just transferring plates over.
So it's just numbers.
It's just numbers now, I believe, for, for, for the registration going up. But once again, the interest rates don't seem to have bothered too many people, except they're not buying new cars.
Except where?
They're not buying the new cars.
Oh, yeah.
You know, and the ones that are buying the new cars are buying a higher-end car.
Big new cars, yeah.
Yeah, big new cars. So, but the prices of cars have gone up drastically, they're starting to come back a little. The used car market's starting to come down a little. So I don't have a crystal ball, this is across the region, I talked to our auditors about this and this is a great problem to have, but it's a great problem that's being had across the region. That, you know, and, and it's the same thing, why? Why is this, you know, it's because of people moving from Massachusetts to southern New Hampshire. Because that's where a lot of the apartments were being built right now, Manchester, Nashua, Merrimack, Londonderry. Salem.
Salem.
You know, so that's the influx of people coming north. And then, of course, interest.
Interest.
We have, we have some interest, but, you know. Yeah, who knows?
Pandemic, yeah.
Who knows what's gonna, you know, in November, who knows what's gonna happen? Who knows what's gonna happen a year in Ja- from January with, with the president coming in? There could be new fiscal policies and that interest rate goes down to nothing again. You know, you just never know what, what that's gonna be, so that's why when we budget for interest, I know it looks like we're, we're short budgeting for the interest because we budget a million dollars and right now it looks like we got one point seven million. But if I budget for one point eight million dollars and we only get a million dollars, I'm coming up with eight hundred thousand dollars as a surplus. And that, if I have to budget in the revenue side in the MS, in September, for even five hundred thousand dollars, that's ten cents on the tax rate. So even if I had a decreased revenue interest, so that's why we're more cautious with budgeting the auto registrations and the interest when it comes down to it because it's, it, it's easy to go up and give you the tax break. It's a lot harder to recoup that tax break coming down. And from years of experience way back when, you know, we were making point one percent on our money and we had six hundred thousand dollars, um, budgeted for interest and we were making forty thousand for the year, it's like, that's five hundred and forty, we gotta take out a surplus to help us offset and try to bring that number down consciously and not just saying, okay, I'm gonna and not just saying, okay, I'm going to cut five hundred thousand dollars and add ten cents to the tax rate. It, you gotta, you gotta slowly bring those numbers back down. So, yeah, can we raise that up next year to maybe one point two million dollars? Probably could, but we gotta be cautious on the back end if it, it, if the economy turns and they start cutting the interest rates like they said they were going to do in the first quarter of this year. And now they're talking maybe in the fourth quarter, maybe in the fourth quarter. So, but.
And definitely, they said, uh, everything I've read, and we had the trustees meeting last Friday. They're very hesitant to do anything before the election, so it looks like they're trying to move it one way or the other.
And they don't want to be the board that one way or the other that influences the election.
Right.
By, by their policy. That's what they said too. Because it's supposed to be an independent board.
Yeah.
So we'll see.
So all the auto registrations dropped the last couple of years and, and yet they're even higher still this year. Did, what were we anticipating for auto registrations? We couldn't possibly have gone up, could we, or?
No, we, we did five million, six hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. We've been flatlining that for like three or four years now.
Yeah, expecting it to come down and it's been, it's been beating that number every year, right?
Uh, yeah, uh, this year, for s- this year, it's gonna really beat it. But the last couple of years, it was, it was down to the last couple of days. Honestly, the last week, I sign off on a manifest for, we have to pay the state because we're collecting the state portion. And towards the end of the month, I usually get, you know, ten, eleven, ten, nine. This last week, it's been like four, three, seven, ten, for the checks going to the state. So the re- the, the registrations towards the end of June are, are coming down a little bit. Um, we're probably going to beat the five point six million dollars. It'll probably be around five point seven, five point eight. But, you know, we could look at trying to i- increase that next year. That number, we could probably increase when we're looking at it in September to say, okay, where do we really want to be? Do we want to increase another hundred to a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars because this is what we're getting? Or do we just want to keep it flat at five point six and, and wonder if it's going to come down? You know, because it is.
I'd rather underestimate that.
Oh, that, and that's, we do take a cons- I usually did take a conservative approach when I did my revenue estimation for that, that fact. And, you know, there's, there's an old saying in town that what goes up must come down and someday it might. Yeah, someday, someday, uh, I might be right.
It's not one of these days, one of these years.
That's right.
All right. Paul, sorry. Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. And then, again, we, we put the, these three separately because it, it's a lot more indicative of what it really. It's a better look and you can see just how much pooled cash is. As Paul mentioned, it's over one point seven million dollars at this point.
And, and the other thing is, is if you look at your building permits, um, we surpassed it, two hundred and twenty-seven thousand this year, but we're fifty thousand dollars less than the prior year. So building permits and as actually, in the reports that I sent out earlier this week, you can see the building permits for the month of April were significantly less than April of the year before. And usually April's a good indic- indication going forward because usually April's when people start looking at what their IRS tax returns are and, okay, do we want to put on that addition? Do we want to put on the deck? Do we want to get the pool? And kind of those building permits kind of got pulled back. They came up a little bit in May over last year. We're still ahead of schedule, but building permits are starting to get pulled back a little bit. And, uh, and that's going to, you know, we're gonna, we're not going to have the big, uh, the big, uh, you know, we got the three properties up flatly next year, um, the two that he's building, the two commercial units and the two buildings, uh, but he already pulled the building permits for those two. But that'll increase the value, not for December of, it'll increase the value for December of twenty-four, but by the April first of twenty-five, those buildings should be completed and they'll be fully valued, um, which is the denominator of our tax rate. So with building permits, it drives, building permits, what I'm trying to say in a long about way is that building permits drive your denominator of the tax rate. I still got forty-five minutes before the debate. Just prepping you for what you're going to hear at the debate. A lot of talk, no, but.
A lot of talk, no action.
Um, but no, your, 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 uh, building permits drive your denominator is what I'm trying to say there. And the last couple of years, we had strong growth in our building permits, which if you notice, we had strong growth in our, our ta- our denominator, which was our assessment. We had a blip in our assessment because we got upside down, so to speak, between our commercial, industrial and residential. Residential in this town is selling really well right now, above value, way above values.
Way above.
And, and commercial, industrial kind of has taken a, a backseat and has fallen down. I believe our estimated equalization rate, like at seventy-three percent. Lauren's going to kill me for saying that out loud, but I believe we're like seventy-three percent and we're only three years into a revow. So we gotta look at that again and maybe we've, Lauren's been hoping that the market will correct itself, but the market hasn't corrected itself on residential.
But don't we, isn't the software set up so that it, you know, when we have like homes and they're going up, we, there's no way that that can.
No, we don't, we don't do that. It has to be on evaluation. Unless by, unless you put in, um, your addition for your, uh, six-car garage and your, uh, three extra bedrooms and when people go out, that's the only time we can adjust the value in between the April, you know, the five-year on that, on your house. So if you evaluated April, say we did in April twenty, and you were valued for three hundred thousand dollars and you know you can get seven hundred for your house right now, we don't raise that until we do the revaluation in April of twenty-five.
The value of the garage.
But when the, when they do the garage, they look at the whole house again and they can add extra value.
Ouch. But based on the seventy-three percent, it's not, it's not the full value.
No, it's not the full.
Because that wouldn't be fair at all.
But it's based on the value. If the garage is, if you're putting on a garage, six-car garage, say it's two hundred and fifty thousand, your value will go up a hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
So let's say your house is worth three hundred thousand dollars.
Yep.
And you sell it for five hundred and fifty.
Yep.
The assessment stays three hundred thousand?
Uh, when you sell, if you sold your house to Finley for, uh, five hundred thousand dollars, would you look at that, should you take that sale into consideration and maybe value your property within that range? Maybe not at the five hundred, but a little bit less.
But it would probably go up.
It could go up, yes.
But see, it shouldn't go up.
Based on the sale.
If we're not allowed to automatically adjust, if the software, we know what values really are worth because they can see the sales.
I think it gets adjusted based on the sale. Because we had a gentleman in town, uh, buy the house for nine hundred thousand dollars. Came in and wanted to file an abatement because he didn't think his house was worth, uh, seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Because the previous one was like six fifty. And we basically said, you bought it for nine, you only think your house is worth seven fifty? You don't think your house is worth seven fifty, but you bought it for nine, so you tell me you overpaid a hundred and fifty thousand dollars for your house?
But it's not a fair comparison though, Paul, because if my, my house, I know what the value was, it's definitely lower than what I could get for it. But, but that's the, you got the multi- I don't know if it's called the multiplier, the point seven three.
Yeah, the, the evaluation, yeah, the.
Yeah, so, so when you pay the real market value for a home, it shouldn't reflect that.
But when we do a revaluation, you're not going to get hit. If we had two houses.
But in the meantime, you got two more years of paying more taxes than a guy with an identical home down the street who's lived in it for ten years or whatever. I mean, it's, okay.
It's a philosophical.
I shouldn't go down there.
It's, we're going down the philosophical rabbit hole on this and, and actually, you know, this is a great conversation to have with Lauren. She's the assessor and she handles that stuff, to be honest with you. I, I.
It's not Paul's thing.
You know, it, it's, I understand assessing to, to a degree, it's, it's how does she do the assessment? She's the professional, she's the board of assessors and, and actually, you're the board of assessors on her. And, but what's her standard and what she uses? And I, when, when she's in, I will get her to write me a memo of, of that situation. If somebody has a house that's valued at three, they sell it for six, what does the new person pay for value? And we, I can have a memo, have a writer memo and explain it to me and then we can bring that back to the council. Just curious, yeah.
And, and the realization is the next-door neighbor whose house is, is valued at three hundred, but really would sell for six if he sold it.
Right.
Is he still paying taxes at three hundred or is he going to now be reassessed at?
Well, I hope they don't get, I hope they don't do that, but, no. I, I get it because homes are, homes in the town are, are selling quite well still. There is not a lot of inventory. At one point in the state, there was eighty-five homes for sale in the entire state of New Hampshire.
That's because no matter where you, why you're selling, because you're going to have to pay.
Well, yeah, exactly. Unless you're moving out of the state, you're not putting your house on the market. Because there's no place for you, there's not even an apartment, affordable apartment you can move into. Even if you do sell your house for that five, six hundred thousand dollars, you'll pay that back in rent in no time.
Okay, that philosophical discussion is.
How does that happen?
Back to Paul, collaborate. Thank you.
Uh, and questions, comments?
We had a lot of com- unrelated comments.
Yes, very good discussion. Are we all good then?
I think so, thank you.
Paul, thanks so very much.
You're very welcome.
Wonderful job. Pretty much there. Alrighty.
The one thing I would like to say is that the town is financially secure and sound.
Yep.
We're very sound, we're very financially secure right now.
Thank you, Paul. Item five under new business, the council considered a request for the transfer of funds to cover the shortfall in the welfare department's budget that we spoke about a little bit ago.
Yeah, um, we had Pat Murphy, uh, the welfare coordinator. For those that don't know her, um, she's very prudent, very stringent. Um, is not willy-nilly with the town's funds. Um, she knows the law. She is, um, basically one of the foremost experts in the state on the law in the welfare division. We are lucky to have her, uh, in this town to do our welfare. We just got hit with five really difficult housing cases this year. That, uh, Pat, um, worked very hard to help those five individuals find their permanent housing. Hopefully for now to the, the fu- into the future. Um, that being said, we had to cover a lot of temporary housing costs for those five individuals. They were very difficult cases, um, and it ran up our, our budget and our housing, um, line item. Uh, overall, I think we're, we're projecting seventy thousand dollars. Um, as you know, we were at twenty-one thousand dollars in the, in the March. We had another two months of, um, housing for those individuals. They, the last one just got off, what, maybe, what do you say, Sharon? Pat was happy, what, two meetings ago, that, that wasn't that long, beginning of June, she got, I won't say red, that's a bad way to say it. She, she was able to find the last case, their permanent home, um, at the beginning of June. So with that being said, uh, people are saying, well, why am I here tonight? Um, and why didn't you stop her? If you're going to stop the fire department spending overtime, why don't you stop Pat Murphy from spending welfare? Well, in the state of New Hampshire, there's an RSA. And the RSA is thirty-five colon ten.
Thirty-three, thirty-two, ten?
Thirty-two colon ten, sorry. I was reading down here where it's, later on it says thirty-five, sorry. Thirty-two colon ten. Um, and, oh, that basically is, um, if changes arise during the year following any annual meeting, it's necessary to expand more than the amount appropriated for a specific person. The governing body may transfer the appropriation of any unexemptive balance remaining and some other appropriations provided there that the total amount spent shall not exceed the total amount of appropriations, which we will not oversee. But there is an RSA, um, that basically says in, in the, uh, for the, the, uh, welfare division is that for these, uh, individual assistant items, a town cannot cap the individual assistance provided to residents of the town. If it's needed, you need to pay for it, whether it's going to overspend your budget or not. And that's why we have to do this, is that these are assistance for housing. So, uh, Paul and I projected seventy thousand dollars being overspent. Right now, she's at, you know, sixty-one thousand, but we still have some of those credit card bills coming in for some of those, uh, residences that we had to pay for. So we're using seventy. Um, I'm asking for the money to be transferred from, um, the, um, police, um, sour, uh, health insurance line. As I stated before, we have had some savings in the police, um, department due to the savings of, uh, open positions. So, uh, we have sufficient money in the health insurance line in the police department. And I didn't want to nickel and dime it. I didn't want to take five thousand from DPW, two thousand from police, one thousand from general government. We had enough money in there. Excuse me, to do what we needed to do. So that's why I just took it in that one line. And we've done this before, um, I believe in two thousand twenty-ish or two thousand nineteen, we had to come in front of the council once before and ask for money to be transferred for welfare. So, and it's not because we didn't think about this during the budget season. There was no way we could have projected being overspent sixty-five thousand dollars in housing. And we even increased it la- from last, in the current budget, we increased it like fifteen thousand, twenty thousand dollars and we still overspent. So it was just, we had these five very difficult cases that hopefully found their forever home. For, not only for the town of Merrimack, for, for Pat Murphy's sanity.
Yeah, it's so true.
And, and we've had other cases where Pat has said, okay, you can afford the hotel or you can afford the housing or you can afford your rent, I'll give you gas money so that you can go to your job. And she's done things like that. So she's looked at every avenue possible to help offset, mitigate some of these costs.
Very good. Eddie?
Um, I'm, just to be clear, I'm going to support this because I think it's the right thing to do. But going back to the RSA, it says the governing body may transfer to that appropriation an unexemptive balance remaining in other appropriations. So just to make sure I'm clear and the public's clear, this RSA isn't forcing us to do this, but this RSA is giving us the authority to do this. Is that a correct understanding?
Yes and no. This, this RSA gives you the authority to transfer between departments. There's another RSA, which is not in here, that says welfare has to overspend. Our charter says no department can overspend their budget.
Without it coming to us.
Without, without being covered from another division.
But it has to come to the council.
It has to come to the council if it's overspent. So that's what we're trying to do, is that, we're trying to move the money into Pat. So we follow the charter to say that no department's not overspent.
Did that cover it, Andy? Because I think Andy was saying it's saying you don't, it doesn't say you have to do it.
No, that, this is the authority from the state to move the money. You don't have to move the money. But our charter says that no department can be overspent.
Right, but I, but we could still, as we're doing tonight, I think, given you, you know, that approval, we could still do that because it says in order for one department to overspend a budget.
Yeah, you have to have savings someplace else.
Yes, and that, the couns- you can move all money within the department, but from department to department, it has to come to the council. So this would be a natural occurrence as well.
Correct.
But anyhow.
So what would happen in a, in a scenario, because the last part of this RSA says, um, however, the total amount spent shall not exceed the total amount appropriated at the town or district meeting, right? So if, if we're at the end of our budget and we've got fifteen days to go and welfare's overspent and we need to support somebody, does that mean that we're going to have to stop spending somewhere that we budgeted it in order to cover that?
The RSA, yes, for that, yes.
Okay.
Right now, we have sufficient money, as you saw.
Yeah.
Um, there is also another RSA, I believe it's, uh, one eleven or eleven dash one, that we, if you, you're in that situation, say you have five days left.
Yep.
And your welfare budget's overspent by sixty and you've got only thirty thousand dollars left in your appropriations for the whole year. There is another RSA, and I don't know if it's eleven dash one or a one eleven dash one, that basically says you can go up to DRA and ask for a one-time exemption so that you could take your fund balance and use your fund balance to offset that expense.
Got it. And I'm just asking for my education. I'm not questioning whether we're doing the right thing here. I just, I'm trying to learn.
And that, don't quote me on that RSA. It's been since like two thousand six when we had the first floods, two thousand five, two thousand six, two thousand seven. Yeah, that we, we were looking at that RSA in case we, because they happened early in the year and we didn't know if we were going to have enough money for the whole year. So we actually sent up a request to DRA and they approved it, but we never had to use it. So.
All right.
Nancy?
I just want to thank Pat, um, because I know she's jumping through hoops trying to meet the needs, very specific needs of a population. And we talk about, we don't have housing. So she has some people that, you know, other, under other circumstances, might not have the level of need that they do. So, you know, absolutely support this and I thank her because I know she's jumped through hoops to find funding sources for other things. So, thank you, Pat.
Yes.
Agreed.
All right, what's the pleasure, counsel?
Move to authorize the transfer of seventy thousand dollars from the police department line item number zero one dash zero four dash eight one three one to the welfare department line item zero one dash two five dash eight four eight one.
Second.
Motion by Tom, seconded by Nancy Murphy. Any further discussion on the motion? See, now I'll call a question, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed or abstained, seven zero zero.
Thank you.
Thank you, Paul. Um, next is approval of minutes, we had a June twelfth, two thousand twenty-four special meeting, which was the interviews.
The only question I have is, it was not in the Matthew Thornton room. We were in the memorial room, was that the room?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, we can, we can change that.
That's the only correction I see.
As you could tell, we used the template.
That's it.
Yeah.
So I would like to, uh, make a motion to approve the town council's special meeting minutes from June twelfth, two thousand twenty-four with corrections noted.
And I'll make a second.
Motion by Nancy Harrington, seconded by Mackenzie. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed or abstained?
Seven.
It's six, uh, zero, one with Jennifer abstaining. Um, then we have the June thirteenth, two thousand twenty-four minutes.
I haven't seen a change.
I didn't have anything to add.
I can motion to approve the town council meeting minutes from June thirteenth, two thousand twenty-four as written.
I'll make a second.
Motion by Nancy Harrington, seconded by Mackenzie. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed or abstained? Uh, seven zero zero. Comments from the press? Comments from the public? Comments from the council? Nancy?
Thank you. Um, I just wanted to say it was, uh, on the June twenty-second, from eleven to two, camp sergeant had their, um, one-hundredth, uh, year anniversary. It was a, a phenomenal event, very well attended. Um, the, the, um, founders were there, staff, kids, families, it was, the food was delicious, um, lot of acknowledgements, proclamations read, so, um, thank you to all, uh, the YMCA, um, staff and families that, um, put that together. It was, it was wonderful. And the only other announcement is, um, to say thank you to all who attended today's, uh, the longest day in New Hampshire, uh, hot dogs for Alzheimer's. Uh, we had that till seven tonight and actually we sold out, I left when we sold the last, the last hot dog at like quarter of seven. So, uh, again, phenomenally well attended, thank you to all who supported, came, I think we had, I don't know my gut, I don't know the numbers, but it just felt like during the ti- normal downtimes, it was a little busier today, uh, today, so we'll find out what the, what the total sales were. Um, but thank you to Bob Bergen and everybody that helped and all the community, uh, the vendors, um, just, just such support by so many groups that really makes that, um, a phenomenal, uh, phenomenal event. And the number of vendors that provide, um, the hot dogs, the Coca-Cola products, the e- everything, uh, you know, so again, thank you to everybody and it was great seeing everybody there.
Thank you, Nancy.
I just wanna echo that, that announcement as well. I helped out a little bit this afternoon as well and it was a tremendous, um, response. Um, with, every year it's growing in, in the number of vendors and, and people, uh,